Alderman Woods.
Here.
Coram present, please stand and join us in my pledge of allegiance. Let the minute-taker know Alderman Sizmarsky is here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice overall.
Next, I'd like a motion for approval of Minnetonka City Council, October 20th, 2011.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions, comments, corrections? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, communications and petitions. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. One at a time, please step to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Lynn Stausmit and I live at 447 Itasca Street. And I'm here today to talk to you about the citations against my home. Municipal Code 4.2102, keeping and hoarding more than three dogs, and 10.104.6, h. Boarding of animals in my home. I am not a kennel or a boarding facility. I am a foster home for Almost Home Foundation. My family and I have helped save over 300 dogs in our home over a five-year period. Without my role as a temporary home, these animals would surely be put to their deaths. Most are young puppies, pregnant dogs, and senior dogs that just need a second chance and more time to find a loving home. I've come to you today to ask for a foster license through the city of Wooddale. I am already recognized through the Department of Agriculture. I ask that the city of Wooddale update their ordinance to allow for residents of Wooddale to be able to own pets of their own while providing temporary homes for dogs or cats of a rescue organization over the limit of three dogs. I am more than willing to follow realistic requirements for a foster home. By allowing my home to have a foster license, the community can benefit in various ways. One, Almost Home will continue working with Wooddale residents and the law enforcement regarding stray and unwanted pets. Two, revenue increases by providing a foster license opportunity for myself and others that provide foster care in their home. Three, a community awareness service can be provided by myself or in conjunction -- with conjunction of Almost Home, free of charge, such as presentations to school, civil clubs, et cetera. Wooddale will be showing its community that being a non-kill is a joint effort. Rescues with temporary homes help in the spay and neuter efforts in your area. No-kill effort takes a whole community, and a volunteer foster program is an rewarding way for rescue organizations to work hand-in-hand with their community in saving animals' lives. The Stausmit family and Almost Home Foundation is asking you to allow us to continue our efforts in your community by allowing my home to have a foster license. Thank you.
Thank you. John, could you, after the meeting, maybe get some information and see if staff can come to a conclusion on this matter? Christine?
I just want to add that I do want to see a conclusion in a positive fashion for this very noteworthy cause, and the no-kill concept is something that I know we've been working towards as a city regards to cats and dogs. So, any kind of solution that can be come up with here, I really want to encourage us as a city to do this, and it is the right thing. Thank you.
John, did you want to say something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, I mean, I'd be more than happy to meet with these residents and discuss this issue. Although, review of the city municipal code, and again, just so you know, what this will probably take will be, and the attorney can probably verify, this will be a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. As of right now, you know, any way you want to define what it is that this organization is doing, by definition, the code, it's considered a kennel. It would need to be licensed by the city. But even more importantly, the zoning district regulations for residential zoning districts do not allow kennels. It's not allowed as a special use or as a permitted use, so you would probably be looking at some sort of a text amendment at some point in the future.
Thanks, John. Yes, sir. If you could state your name and address, please.
My name is Chuck Hanson. I live at 6N040 Arcasia Lane in Medina, Illinois. I am the vice president of Almost Home Foundation, and I'm also one of the founders. Almost Home Foundation was established and founded a little over six and a half years ago to rescue stray and abandoned animals that were in the local pounds and kennels to be put to sleep, to be rehabilitated and put back into population, and adopted to the communities. We rescue dogs from Wooddale. The dogs that you have on the street that are picked up by your animal control officers before they can get to DuPage County or wherever you decide to put them sometimes, we're called and we take those dogs. We do not put them to sleep. We put them back into foster homes. A foster home is nothing more than a temporary housing facility for us so that we can find a permanent home for these dogs. We run adoption shows every weekend. We rent them at all the local Petsmart stores here in the area. In the last six and a half years, Almost Home Foundation is proud to say that we've rescued, saved, and put back into circulation over 7,000 animals. And that's something to be said that we're quite proud of. We would hope that Wooddale would be part of the community that would allow us to continue to do this by allowing some of the people who live in your community to be foster homes for us or temporary housing facilities. They are licensed by the Department of Agriculture. They are taken care of, and I don't believe that they create any problems within your community at all whatsoever. In fact, the one that's here right now tonight, Lynn Stausmit, has even gone through her neighborhood and has picked up over 30-some odd signatures from people in her neighborhood that say nobody has a problem with her being there. So, I don't understand why you might not want to try to at least amend this so that we could have some temporary housing facilities in Wooddale as one of the communities that we also rescue from. Does anybody have any questions?
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, first, I'd like to thank you for coming and talking to the council. My question would be, how many dogs or animals would they be keeping? And what is the timeframe that they keep the animals?
The license that comes through the Department of Agriculture says that they would allow them to have far, just four, foster homes in their house at the same time. Other than that, if you exceed that number, then you're also breaking the law with the Department of Agriculture. If Wooddale decides that that's too many, whatever the city of Wooddale wants to do, then we'd be happy to, you know, go along with you or at least talk to you about it. The general time period that they spend in someone's house is about somewhere between a month to two months. That's it, and they're gone. If we're adopting 7,000 animals out in six years, they're not staying around too long.
Thank you.
They come and go quite quickly.
Yes, sir. Alderman Lazara.
With the four foster dogs, is that four foster dogs plus three of their own? Is that how that, or that's four?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be, if you're talking about what you're allowing here in the village, which is three, the Department of Agriculture says you can only have four others.
Okay, so we're talking about seven dogs.
Seven dogs. Or puppies.
Okay.
I mean, here's a picture of what's in her house right now.
How many do you have right now?
Excuse me. You have to go to the podium if you're going to answer questions.
I have three dogs of my own, and then we tend to foster pregnant dogs that come out of kill shelters in different situations, and then I raise up her litter of puppies in my home. So, when they're eight weeks old, they're ready for adoption. So, sometimes it takes a little bit of time for all of the puppies to find a home. My last litter was from a shepherd mix that was 50 pounds and ended up having 13 puppies. We lost one at 10 days old, and then we started bottle-feeding the rest of them. The last two were just adopted at four months old. So, sometimes it takes a little bit of time to find all of them a home.
How long have you been doing this?
I've been helping with Almost Home for over five years.
Are you the only one in Wooddale that does this for Almost Home?
No, I'm not.
Do you know how many are actually doing that?
Three or four.
Three or four residents? Okay, thank you. I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Shockey.
May I ask why you had to come in tonight?
I had a complaint and got a citation. The two citations that I received were for operating a kennel and having a boarding facility.
What I would like to know, if we can change the ordinance to read adopted, or dogs to be adopted, that are only there for a certain amount of time, whether it be two or three months or whatever, and have a limit on the number, of course, but definitely have something, maybe to have these people registered with the city as being allowed to do what they're doing, because if they weren't doing it, I wouldn't have our dog. I'd miss him. So, I think we need to change the ordinance and allow for this type of thing, but on a registered basis, so that if neighbors complain, we can go and find out, or we know if that's an adopted dog person. And if it is not, then they have to conform to the three animals.
Alderman Coles.
As a lot of people know, I'm a dog lover. We should change the ordinance for adopted dogs, but not for a kennel. A kennel can depend on taking a dog, grooming it. You don't want to groom, if you want to use the alpha for adopted dogs, you just use it for adopted dogs. Not grooming, not any of the bringing people's dogs in for grooming and stuff like that. So, the ordinance will have to have no grooming at all. And I'll go along with adopted dogs because I've done some strange things in my years since '85 with dogs, and I don't even know where to start. But I love dogs, so I have my own dogs. And I've had a few extra once in a while because of rescuing. I've rescued some French Bulldogs from Midway Airport. I've rescued some from Georgia, and I've registered some from Kentucky out of what we call mills. And so, I'll go along with the ordinance being changed to rescue dogs or something like that, but I won't go for, to put a kennel license on it, because kennel, then you'll be able to do some grooming. Okay? That's all I got to say.
Thank you. I can tell you, I'm very familiar with your organization. I have one for your dogs. And the manager will put this on the appropriate committee for discussion to adjust. But if you could still get their numbers, John, this way, in case we need any information. Thank you.
Our purpose here was also not to come in and have you license people, you know, to have animals in their homes, because we've already licensed them with the Department of Agriculture as a foster home or a temporary housing facility. We're not looking to set up kennels in Wooddale. We don't want that. You already have one in Wooddale. You don't need anymore. I know that, okay? But we just want to have some people here who can help us save some animals from being put to sleep until we can get them into an adopted permanent home. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay? Any other questions, or?
Oh, sorry, one more. Alderman Sizmarsky.
What was the citation for, other than running a?
You need to go to the microphone.
I know I saw it. I saw it before, but I seem to have left that paper behind.
It's for illegal to keep or harbor more than three dogs at a time at a residence and running a home-based business such as a boarding facility.
So, there was no mention of loud noise from the dogs or anything?
No. No, it's just, it's under the nuisance act, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
You mentioned something in the citation. As a rescuer for Almost Home Foundation, do you actually get paid?
No, we're all volunteer. And also, we drive, we do home checks. So, we drive around to the adopter's home to make sure that it's the best possible place. I also take them to the vet. I spend, you know, time driving to different various vets, getting them spayed and neutered, shots, stuff like that. So, we're all volunteer. I go every Saturday from 11 to 3 to the Petsmart. It's all volunteer.
So, you're not really running a business out of that?
No, not at all.
Okay, so the citation did state that, but the only thing that you're really doing is that you just have more dogs than what's allowed.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no one in Almost Home Foundation that draws any kind of money at all whatsoever. We're all 100% volunteers, and all the money that's donated or brought into the organization is spent 100% on the animals.
Alderman Shockey had a follow-up.
Yeah, just a follow-up on that. The organization makes sure that the pets are spayed or neutered.
That's, yeah, we're not invited to the Department of Agriculture under a law that we have to have them before we put them out there.
And they're microchipped. And when I looked at the papers I got with our dog, we cannot give him away or just dispose of him, because if they find him and you have, with the microchip, it'll get back to you, and you'll find out, and we would be held responsible.
Yes.
So, that's a nice thing to do.
In the contract that we have everybody sign when they adopt the dog, it states on there.
Use the microphone, please.
I'm sorry.
In the contract that we have everyone sign when they adopt the dog from us, it's stated in there that if for any reason whatsoever they decide that they don't want the dog, it has to be returned to us. If it's sent anyplace else, there is a microchip on every one of our dogs that's basically registered them as soon as the adoption takes place. And then after that, if they give it to somebody else, we'll find out about it. There's a $5,000 fine for giving our dogs away to somebody else now. And so, I don't think most people want to get hit with that. And that's in writing already. So, we're trying to protect everybody else, and we do microchip everybody. So, it makes it easier even for your village. If you should pick up an animal and it's microchipped, they scan it, they know exactly who owns it.
And a follow-up on that, I'm not saying that we should make them pay for a license in Wooddale, but they should be registered with no cost so that the police department and the building department know who the people are that have the Almost Home Foundation dogs. So, if there is a complaint, the complainant will be told about it and explain the situation. So, that fine there, I take it, will be discarded in some way?
Mr. Forrest.
I would like to look at the paperwork you have. I would be surprised if you were issued a citation and not a field correction notice. Is this, did you get anything else with this?
No, this is just what came in the mail.
Okay, this is basically a letter of notification about a code violations. No citations have been issued yet. That's not our usual and customary procedure when we're dealing with residents. We usually give people a certain amount of time to comply once we're aware of a violation. We would then typically issue a field correction notice, which a lot of people confuse with getting a citation, but it's actually an official notice of a violation. And then if there's continued non-compliance, then citations are issued. But you have not gotten any citations yet, no.
Thank you.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
How does Almost Home Foundation get their money? Where's that come from?
We do fundraising. In fact, next month, in December, December 3, we're holding our annual holiday Christmas party, which you're all invited to come to if you'd like to. Okay? It's right up the street in Rolling Meadows at the Meadows Club. It's a dinner, it's a dance, it's a silent auction, it's a big party. There's going to be about 400, 500 people there. And it's, I'm sorry, no dogs. That night, we leave them all home. We do fundraising activities. We did a run-and-walk marathon this summer. We do bake sales. We do adoptions. We do all sorts of things that'll help us raise money to continue to help us pay the $10,000 a month vet bills that we incur, just to take care of them.
If somebody wanted to make a donation, how would they get a hold of you?
You can go online, and you can make it right online through www.AlmostHomeFoundation.org. And in there, there's a place where you can make a donation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Or you can come to the party, and you can help make some donations there. Okay? Pleasure. Anything else?
Alderman Shockey.
One more thing, and I understand that the veterinarians that you use give you good discounts. In other words, they give the shots and take care of the, any illnesses the dogs may have before they're passed on to the new owners.
Oh, yeah.
I know that if, with our dog, it would have cost over $1,000 just to buy the dog and then all the vet bills, and through you, it was like 200-some dollars only.
Right.
Well worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do any other citizens wish to be heard on another matter? Okay. Next up is mayor's report. First off, Streetscape Committee want to rename the Streetscape Committee to Streetscape and Economic Enhancement Committee. Next is the Termination of the Downtown Development Committee. We're going to get rid of that committee. And then appointments, the Clean Air Accounts Committee. Like to appoint Mark Winger for a two-year term and Barb McCauley for a two-year term. And one other item, under mayor's report, received a letter from the Village of Bensonville. Fenton High School and the sister city, Cheffalou Foreign Student Exchange Program, will be hosting 10 students from Cheffalou, Sicily this November. This program offers wonderful cultural and educational opportunities for all of the Fenton High School as they come into contact with these exceptional students. Additionally, we will be sending 10 of our Wooddale-Bensonville students to Sicily to study this spring. These are rare, once-in-a-lifetime opportunities that enhance our communities at every level. We are requesting financial support for the visit in order to cover some of the entertainment, lodging, and meal expenses for the students and their host families. Thank you for your participation in this program and your timely, generous donation. And the checks will be made out to Foreign Student Exchange Program, Care of Village of Bensonville, if we wish to proceed with this. Alderman Wesley.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve $500 to the organization, since they are Wooddale residents that will be taking part in this program. So, I will make a motion for $500 to be awarded to this for entertainment for these people that are coming over here, and it's a, our people go over there, and it's going to be a benefit for our community. So, I would make that motion.
Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes my report. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items. Residents can expect to see the electric aggregation program starting on their bills for their December usage, so that would be their January bill. So, that process has finally been completed. My second item is in reference to COMEd. When I was made manager about a year ago, one of my main priorities was the correcting, or the correction of the outstanding service reliability concerns cited by both residents and elected officials when dealing with COMEd. Later this month, Wooddale staff will be given a plan by our external affairs rep that will highlight those improvements based upon our previous meetings with COMEd. These improvements will, at the very least, involve the installation of Hendrix wires in designated areas around town with constant outages that may not have been storm-related. For those of the aldermen that did attend some of these meetings with staff, a Hendrix line is a special line that will not cause the adjacent circuit to trip in a heavily wooded area, specifically in areas of Ward 1. When these wires would trip, that would cause outages when it would come in contact with a tree. Keep in mind, these improvements have nothing to do with Senate Bill 1652, which is the COMEd smart grid. A full report will be forthcoming in tomorrow's packet, but just in summary, Senate Bill 1652 is going to bring $9.5 million to the city of Wooddale, $7.5 million for general infrastructure improvements, $2 million for smart meters. Keep in mind, the smart grid and the Senate Bill 1652 has nothing to do with the efforts by staff and the elected officials on correcting some of these outstanding COMEd issues. And like I said, the report will be in the packet tomorrow. That concludes my report.
Boy, it took two years.
You want to comment? Go ahead. Alderman Lazara.
Jeff, I'd like to thank you for your attention on this matter, especially for, you know, keeping COMEd to task on a lot of these issues that have been plaguing our town for quite a while. Sounds like you're really getting some good, you know, headway on that. I'd just like to say, from Ward 1, especially in that area that we know about, thanks for looking into that.
Thank you. Next, consent agenda. We have eight items on the consent agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
Shouldn't you announce the veterans' breakfast?
That's right. You know what? The veterans' breakfast will be November 12 from 8:30 to 10:30 at Salt Creek. All veterans and their families, and there's a ceremony to follow. Thank you, Alderman Coles.
I'll make the motion to approve a consent agenda, Mayor.
Second.
Any questions, comments, corrections? Roll call, please.
Alderman Coles. Alderman.
Here.
Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, an ordinance amending the city of Wooddale Municipal Code Chapter 7 to establish water rates. Item number two, approval of repairs and upgrades to the police department firing range in a not-to-exceed amount of $54,690. Item number three, approval of redesign and replacement of men's locker room in an amount not-to-exceed $62,730. Item number four, approval of partial pay request, number one, to Arrow Road construction for the 2011 road resurfacing and sidewalk program in a not-to-exceed amount of $171,759.87. Item number five, approval of final pay request to Spectrum Contracting Corp. for the South Plant Chlorine Chamber repair in a not-to-exceed amount of $69,200. Item number six, approval of partial pay request, number three, to AM Coat Painting for the Reservoir 3 and 4 Repainting Project in the not-to-exceed amount of $45,816.75. Item number seven, approval of partial pay request, number one, to McHugh Construction for the 2011 Alley Reconstruction Program in a not-to-exceed amount of $98,025,000. for the 2011 alley reconstruction program in a not-to-exceed amount of $98,025.59. Item number eight, approval of partial pay request, number two, to ALAM Concrete Contractors for the Hemlock Ash and Edwood, Edgewood Water Main Replacement in a not-to-exceed amount of $56,687.96. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Next is committee chairman reports. Alderman Winger, planning and zoning?
There's no report, Mr. Mayor.
Next, public health and safety. Alderman Coles?
No report.
No report, Mayor.
That's Public Works. Finance and Administration. Alderman Shockey?
No report.
Next, we go to other business. I believe we have one item. Alderman Woods?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a, a motion to reconsider a resolution approving the First Amendment to the city of Wooddale Lucci Hubbard Tioga Trail Water Hookup Agreement. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. And you want to continue?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to the table.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Next up is approval of list of bills, November 3, 2011. Alderman Shockey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the bills of 11311, we have $82,633.49 for the general fund. For the motor fuel, fuel tax fund, $95.48. Tourism fund, $36. Capital projects fund, $290,447.11. Computer parking fund, $2,340. Water and sewer capital projects, $173,578.2. And the water and sewer fund, $147,865.55. For a total of $696,995.65. And that's in the form of a motion.
Second or second?
Any questions? Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, again, I will be voting no for the list of bills unless we remove ACOM again for Irving Park Road separate, grade separation for $11,739.52. I would like that removed, all of this, and do a separate motion to pay the bills, eliminating that, and make another motion on the floor for $11,000. If not, I will be voting no for the bills.
Does the motioner in second or agree? Which page is it in? Page one.
Page one is for the grade separation that we have been paying this firm constantly. I know they've been doing work on it, but we have not closed out that account yet, and they keep collecting money from the city, even though it's grant money. I cannot support this, and I have voted no for every bill that has come forward to this. And I will be voting, I have no other questions about the bills. I have no problem passing bills, but if that item is removed, if not, I will be passing a no vote for the whole list of bills.
Can I ask, Mr. Manager, if we have a, an update on what the progress of this item is?
Jeff?
I am not going to give you an update that you like, as usual. It's still ongoing. It seemed to say this all the time. It's really in the hands of, you know, outside entities other than Wooddale reviewing these processes. The reason it has taken so long in the past is because we've changed our minds so many times. We cannot pay the bill. That would be fine, but that would delay the project.
Well, I don't want to delay the project, number one. Secondly, as long as staff is looking at these bills and confirming that the work has been done, I won't change the motion.
Alderman Coles?
Is this a part of phase one? Is this, that's three, four years old? This, this is ridiculous.
Jeff?
Well, keep in mind, the council changed their mind a number of times, which had to push the process back and get more reviews. This is still part of phase one. There's still a remaining fund balance within the grant. And this is being worked on by two engineering firms. This is, the bill's from AECOM, but they subcontract out with HR Green to make sure the process is moving forward, and kind of a checks and balances there. They also recommend the payment of the bill.
I thought this was supposed to be done in October. This was supposed to be finished in October, put into the fellow from HR Green.
Well, supposed to doesn't always mean that it's going to happen.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Coles? Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Winger? Alderman Woods?
Yes.
I'll say no, too. I didn't say anything.
Motion passes.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you. We have no executive session, no items to be referred, no items for information only. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Remove.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.